Good evening, everyone. It is 8:00 PM on Thursday, August 1st, 2024. This public hearing is now open. This event is being recorded and will be posted for public view. My name is Patrick Mallard. I am an environmental engineer with the Division of Air Quality from the Ashville Regional Office. I have been appointed to be the hearing officer for this public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive your comments for consideration to the issuance of an air permit for the Mariah Energy Center for construction and operation of the facility that will liquefy and store natural gas. The address for the site is 6633 Kama Mariah Road, Rougemont, North Carolina, 27572 in Person County. The site will be owned by Public Service Company of North Carolina, doing business as Dominion Energy. All forms of comments will be received and will have equal consideration in the final decision on whether to issue the permit. Because of significant public interest, the Director of the Division of Air Quality, Mike Amersons, has decided to conduct this public hearing as part of the comment period to receive your comments. The public hearing announcement was published in the Roxboro Courier Times and on the Division of Air Quality's website on June 20th, 2024. While the Division of Air Quality prefers to hold the public hearing in the same founding of the facility applying for a permit, the Division was unable to secure a venue in Person County that meets its needs. This was due to contracts for venues owned by Person County Government, Person County Schools, or other locations included indemnity clauses. As an executive agency, the Division of Air Quality is repudited from entering any contracts involving certain types of indemnity clauses. Additionally, several members of the Person County community commented to the Division of Air Quality that as many as 400 community members attended the Person County's zoning hearing for the Mariah Energy Center project. With similar attendance possible for this hearing, the Division decided to allocate the hearing at a venue that could hold at least 500 attendees to ensure all attendees could meet public safety requirements. During the public hearing, we will be receiving oral comments from those individuals who have registered to speak at this event. If you have not registered to speak but wish to provide oral comments, please return to the registration table in the lobby to sign up. Joining me for the hearing tonight are representatives from the Department of Environmental Quality and Division of Air Quality's Raleigh Central Office. We have Sean Taylor, who is the Division of Air Quality's Public Information Officer. We have Cory Williams, who is the Department of Environmental Quality's Title VI and Environmental Justice Coordinator. Cory?
I think we should applaud you for being here.
Thank you. We have Taylor Arcsill, who is the Division of Air Quality's Staff Director. We have representatives from the actual Raleigh Regional Office, including Don Reddick, Regional Supervisor, Cindy Wong, Urban Simple Engineer, Taylor Deeser, Timekeeper, and Abdul We have other regional staff from the Raleigh Office, Tina Vivin. She's outside. John Devaneta, Jimmy Lewis, Rex Alagos from the actual Regional Office. Our number ticker is Isabelle. We would like to thank any local city or county officials who have joined tonight. We appreciate your interest in this very important matter. The comment period for this permit opened on June 20th, 2024, and will close tomorrow on Friday, August 2nd, 2024, at 5:00 PM. In addition to your oral comments tonight, the Division is also accepting comments via email to deq@publiccomment@deq.nc.gov and by phone through voicemail box 2919-707-8726. Also, if you have written comments that you wish to submit, we have a box for you. All forms of comments will be received and all will have equal consideration in the final decision on whether to issue the air permit. Copies of the permit application, the draft permit, the draft permit review, and other information concerning the application are available at the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality Raleigh Regional Office located at 3800 Barrett Drive in Raleigh, and also at the Division of Air Quality's Central Office, Air Command Section, located at 217 West Jones Street, Suite 4000 in Raleigh. These materials are available during normal business hours at these locations. Please call in advance to make an appointment. A copy of the draft air permit and draft permit are also available on the Division of Air Quality's website at www.ncair.org in this section titled "Public Engagement." The order of events for this evening are: First, Cindy Wong of the Division of Air Quality's Raleigh Regional Office, Cindy, will give a discussion on the application and the draft air quality permit. This will be followed by the comment period. Those individuals who have registered to speak will be called upon to present oral comments. To hear as many speakers as possible, oral comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. We want to provide as much time as possible for all speakers to be heard. This public hearing is scheduled to adjourn until later than 9:00 PM tonight. We will call the names of each registered speaker in order of your registration. The first speaker will be called. We will announce the next person and the accused that they can provide comments. Please proceed to the microphone when your name is called. Your time will start when you begin speaking. We will keep track of your time and will announce when your three minutes have expired. Please respect the time for all of you who wish to present oral comments tonight. By adhering to the time limits and closing remarks as quickly as possible when you come up. Cross-examination of the people presenting comments or the hearing officer are not allowed. However, as hearing officer, I may ask questions of the speaker for clarification. Questions directed to the Division of Air Quality staff members will not be answered during this hearing. If you have questions for the DEQ staff, we can provide you with contact information so that you may contact us during oral business hours. We ask that most recognized speakers are presenting their comments. The audience refrain from making noises, including shouting, talking over speakers, or making any other noise that would impact the integrity of the audio recording that is tonight's hearing. This ensures that I, the hearing officer, can hear all comments clearly, that all public comments can be captured as part of the official record, and that all speakers are treated with respect when it is their time to speak. After receiving comments this evening, the public hearing will be closed. However, the period for submitting public comments is not closed until tomorrow, Friday, August 2nd, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Again, all forms of comments will be received and all will have equal consideration in the final decision on whether to issue the permit. At this time, I am going to call Cindy Wong to discuss the application and the draft air quality permit.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Wong and I am a natural talent engineer for the North Carolina Division of Air Quality, based out of the Evaluational Office. I am the permanent engineer for this application. Application number 7300086.3A is for construction and operation for Mariah Energy Center, the proposed greenfield facility planned to be located in Rougemont, North Carolina. Mariah Energy Center will be owned and operated by the Public Service Company of North Carolina, doing business as Dominion Energy, North Carolina. Mariah Energy Center proposes to take pipeline natural gas and liquefy it for storage during periods of excess capacity and convert it back into gas during periods of containment and return to the pipeline. Dominion Energy plans to construct Mariah Energy Center in two phases. The design capacity of the proposed facility is 15 million standard cubic feet of natural gas supply fraction, or 200 million standard cubic feet of natural gas utilization per phase per day. Each phase will comprise of the following: One liquid natural gas storage tank, three glycol heaters, one regeneration gas heater, one hydrocarbon separated, one for flare, three emergency generators. Additionally, Mariah Energy Center will have a power pump and diesel storage tank, a truck loading and unloading operation, and heating operations. The natural gas liquefiling process itself is not subject to any federal regulations, such as new source performance standards abbreviated as NSPS, or international emission standards for hazardous air pollutants, abbreviated as NESH. However, the glycol heaters and the generation gas heaters are subject to NSPS Subpart DC. The total heat input rate of these systems qualifies Mariah Energy Center as one of the 28 worst categories subject to the 120 per year emissions limits to avoid the applicability of prevention of significant deterioration. Additionally, the power pump is subject to NSPS Subpart IVI and NESH Subpart IVZ, and the emergency generators are subject to NSPS Subpart IVJ and NESH Subpart IVZ. Mariah Energy Center will be subject to the general duty clause of Section 100 R of the Clean Air Act. All these storage facilities are considered transportation activities and are subject to regulation by the U.S. Department of Transportation, federal safety standards listed in 49 CFR Part 193. Finally, Mariah Energy Center will be required to comply with state regulations as clarified in the North Carolina Initiative Code. The facility has evaluated its toxic air pollution emissions. Scripting modeling for apaline, benzene, formaldehyde, and hexane showed equally was less than their respective acceptable ambient level. The most recent modeling was approved by the Division's Air Quality Analysis Branch on May 29th, 2024. The draft permit includes conditions that enter ambient levels of all pollutants beyond the facility's test line, composed by state emission standards, including applicable health-based standards. The facility will be subject to record keeping and reporting permits and regulatory inspections. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. At this time, we will hear from those who have registered to provide oral comments this evening. If your name is called, please proceed to the microphone. To ensure our records are complete, please clearly state your name and do your representative. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak here in person. I will do my best to pronounce your names correctly, and I apologize in advance for any errors. We will now take your comments. Our first speaker will be Bernard Lambert, followed by Julie Ny, who will be Jill Hoffman.
This is made for tall people, I'm not. Good evening. My name is Bernard Lambert. My wife and I live next to the proposed Mariah Energy Center. I request that you deny the Mariah Energy Center air quality permit. We acquired our land in 1999 after an extensive search of the surrounding area. We look for acreage in a tranquil, agricultural setting away from pollution, traffic, and congestion. We built our house, our home there. Fast forward to 2023, Dominion Energy, with the support of our Corrupt Person County government, wants to establish an unneeded, ill-conceived, and environmentally damaging facility, now facing the prospect of living next door to a major point source of pollution. I do have a PhD in medicinal chemistry and pharmacology. Based on my 38 years of professional experience in industrial research, development, manufacturing, I am very much concerned about the health and environmental impact of this facility on the surrounding area and its residents. In fact, the concerns of local residents, including myself, prompted us to form two nonprofit organizations, NOMAC and PCN, Person County Community Action Network. I am currently serving as president of PCN. Most community organizations are working to save our environment from this facility. The proposed MEC will emit as much as 200 tons or more per year of greenhouse gases along with the slew of other noxious, toxic, and hazardous VOCs. The source natural gas for this facility will include fracked gas and will contain additional and unknown components. My wife and I are sufferers from respiratory illness, and this additional pollutant will undoubtedly act with your condition. If this air quality permit is granted, it will harm the environment and the health of our residents in the area. The DEQ's mission statement reads as follows, let me quote: "The Division of Air Quality works with the state's residents to protect and improve outdoor quality in North Carolina for the health benefit and economic benefit of all, not just for one company." Okay? I request again that you deny this permit application to preserve our environment and our health. Thank you.
This is where you drop it off? Julie Ny, followed by Jill Hoffman, followed by Chip Prosser.
That's intimidating. Good evening. My name is Julie Ny, and I live in Person County. I'm not a native North Carolinian, you can probably tell, but I came here to go to college and pretty much never left. Twenty years ago, when I found a job that would let me work from home, I moved to Person County. I live in a neighborhood of about 45 homes surrounded by farmland and forests. My house is in the woods on a creek. It's an idyllic setting. Our neighborhood is exactly one mile from the Mariah Energy Center site. We will breathe the same air, drink water from the same aquifer, use the same two-lane county roads, and depend on the same small volunteer fire department in case of emergency. I am asking you to deny the Mariah Energy Center draft air quality permit. I was shocked to learn that regular air quality monitoring is not a requirement for this facility. People just assume that air pollution monitoring will be in place to ensure compliance with standards. I had also assumed that water quality monitoring was required, but then I learned that Dominion said it wasn't necessary because their site plan would control sediment runoff, while my house on Deep Creek is just a few feet away from where Deep Creek joins the Rock Fork branch that flows through the MEC site. Shortly after site preparation began, the water in the Rock Fork branch turned brown and cloudy. Riverkeeper Samantha Crop and NOMAC volunteers regularly sample the water flowing off the site, and they are reporting numerous sediment violations to DEQ. I don't trust Dominion's claims that they will protect our water. And I don't trust Dominion's claims about hazardous air pollutant emissions either. Their modeled formaldehyde emissions are 77% of the limit set by the state, but that model is based on estimates, and some research indicates that the actual formaldehyde concentration could be 1.5 to 1.8 times what was originally modeled, and that would put the emissions way over the permissible concentration. If you do not deny the air quality permit, then I beg you to require robust, ongoing, third-party monitoring of formaldehyde and other HAP emissions at the site throughout the life of the facility. I hope you will also require Dominion to do these three things: Prepare and file a risk management plan so the community and the volunteer emergency responders who serve the area will know what they're dealing with. Two, require them to use double-walled tanks as a safety measure. And three, require them to implement a formal leak detection and repair program. Things do go wrong at these facilities, as we know from a 2014 explosion in Washington State and from Dominion's own 2022 accidental discharge in Virginia. I love my little piece of Person County heaven, and I want to be sure that all reasonable precautions are being taken to ensure that it stays that way. Thank you.
Next is Jill Hoffman, followed by Chip Prosser, and Don Duran.
Hello. My name is Jill Hoffman. My husband and I wake each morning to the sound of the Dominion Energy bulldozers working at the Mariah Energy Center facility. We and our two children moved to our home on 16 acres of wooded land 22 years ago with the intention to retire here. We have made many wonderful memories as our children grew up. We plan to make more memories with our toddler, grandchildren as they grow up, or we plan to, anyway. Unfortunately, I am hesitant to bring anyone, let alone my grandchildren, out to visit because of the polluted environment that will soon be blanketing our paradise. I have a PhD in toxicology from NC State. I completed my postdoc at training at the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences. My research was on how chemicals damage DNA leading to lung and liver cancer. I'm very concerned about the pollutants that will be released by this facility. These chemicals cause cancer. These chemicals cause a multitude of other diseases. These chemicals damage our environment. It is the responsibility of the state of North Carolina to protect its citizens. Knowing what is in our air is important. There is no obvious nor reasonable long-term or even short-term plan, including a third party, for monitoring the pollutants that will be released. No baseline has been set. Relying on self-testing by Dominion Energy should not be an option. You know the story about the fox watching the hen house. My husband and I, as well as fellow members of the organizations NOMAC and Person County Community Action Network, respectfully ask that you deny this air permit to Dominion Energy to ensure the safety of our citizens as well as our environment in Person County. Thank you.
Next is Chip Prosser, followed by Don Duran, and then...
Good evening. My name is Chip Prosser, and I'm here on behalf of the Carolinas Natural Gas Coalition. We're a group of companies, manufacturers, and allies who formed together in the Carolinas to dispel the mistruths and misconceptions that are spread about natural gas. I'm here to express the coalition's strong support of Dominion Energy's Mariah Energy Center project. North Carolina is experiencing significant population growth in attracting new companies and jobs in record numbers. North Carolina's energy demands are increasingly and rapidly driven by record-breaking economic development and a surge of need for robust electrical power generation. To meet these growing needs, it is essential to expand the natural gas supply and infrastructure in this area. Natural gas has proven to be a reliable, safe, and affordable base load energy source. It offers a cost-effective solution for families and businesses, allowing them to thrive without facing high energy costs. To successfully compete for jobs and investments, it is vital to keep energy costs below the national average. Natural gas, as part of an "all of the above" energy strategy, supports North Carolina's ability to meet its energy needs effectively and efficiently. Furthermore, natural gas is pivotable in integrating more renewable energy sources like wind and solar. While renewables are essential for our cleaner energy future, their intermittent nature requires a reliable backup that natural gas can provide to maintain grid stability. Natural gas provides a 24/7 flexibility, enabling the state to use more renewables without compromising the grid and the energy supply. This infrastructure will help North Carolina continue progressing towards a cleaner energy future, while assuring our energy systems remain reliable, robust, and compatible, supporting ongoing. I would also like to comment on Dominion Energy's commitment to safety. As an employee of Southeast Connections, which is a contractor for Dominion, a long-term contractor, I have seen firsthand their unwavering commitment to safety, and I can personally speak that they hold their contractors to the same high standards to promote safety and environmental. Dominion's Energy Natural Gas Service has been operated safely in Person County for decades, and their similar LNG facility in Cary has been running efficiently and safely for almost 50 years. This gives us the confidence to support this initiative. Moreover, the project ensures reliability. North Carolina is a natural gas-producing state, therefore is solely dependent on the infrastructure getting it here. When...
Thank you. Don Duran, followed by Bernie Duran, and Chris...
Hello. My name is Don Duran. I live on a 55-acre farm with my extended family, farm animals, and wildlife in southern Person County, dangerously near the MEC, and what the Person County Board of Commissioners and Dominion Energy have tragically decided to designate a sacrifice zone. As the unethically and irresponsibly dropped zone, a heavy industrial-toxic LNG facility in what has always been rural conservator land with no other contiguous industrial zoning for miles and miles, no safe access roads, no risk management plan or fire protection, a decision unanimously opposed by virtually everyone in our part of the county, as well as by a parade of doctors, scientists, lawyers, teachers, farmers, firemen, and zoning professors, all whose expertise was ignored and disparaged. I'm here to respectfully request that you deny Dominion's respect for air permitting, and I use as a basis for my request your agency's own mission statement, which is providing science-based environmental stewardship for the health and prosperity of all North Carolinians. It is incredible to me that the permanent question has already been given preliminary approval by your agency. Has there been any third-party scientific review of Dominion's modeling data? Data which is well-known to be suspect and unreliable when it comes to the prospective volume of toxic emissions? Has there been an environmental impact study, not only for air pollution, but for water runoff, noise, and wildlife impact? If not, why not? Just with their initial site preparation, does this board know that Dominion is already polluting nearby streams and watersheds with illegal levels of turbidity that has required state intervention? Do you think their toxic emissions will be any different? I don't... I don't think so. If it is true that the permanent question does not require Dominion to provide to your agency strict air quality monitoring, how will you have the data to be able to protect the citizens you purport to serve? When I asked a Dominion expert at their informational meeting last March how far from the site their toxic flare burning would impact the surrounding area and how often such a gas burn-off would occur, he could not answer me, only saying that it would be dependent on the quality of the fracked gas received. This is his words: "It might be three times a month, three times a week, or even once a day for several hours, depending." He also stated that no modeling of the toxic spread had been done outside the borders of the site's property. What? The wind does not stop blowing at the property line, so of what benefit is this limited modeling? This is not the scientific clarity of fact we citizens need and deserve. This is purposeful vagueness and lack of accountability. Finally, I submit that there is minimal to zero prosperity resulting from the operation of such a dangerous facility, and if so, prosperity only for just a handful of North Carolinians who might own stock in Dominion or Enbridge rather than for all North Carolinians as stated in your mission statement. Thus, it should be readily apparent that this project is ill-advised, it's unnecessary, and it's not well-vetted at all, and imposes incredible safety and health risks for the impact decisions you are charged to protect. Again, this permit should and must be denied. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to submit my written comments, and I see a place for them, and I'd also like to submit, along with that, pictures of my horses, our goats, and my grandchild exploring wildlife down in our pond, as they're all are being unnecessarily put at risk and they demand your protection. These pictures are my attempt to make this all as real for you as it is for me and my family.
Next is Mary Lee Narinsky. Followed by Chris, so I can't get the last name. And then Elizabeth Arant.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lee Narinsky. I live on a farm not far from the proposed MEC. I'm here with other members of our community to plead with you all to deny the permit application from Dominion. In formulating my three-minute opposition, I wondered what was the best way to pierce the veil that separates us, these physicians, regulators, citizens. And then I realized, you are us, and we are you, and we all have the vital need to breathe in order to live. Breathing is extremely complex. It affects all the vital organs in the nervous system. An average human breaths about 20 breaths in a minute, 960 in an hour, 23,000 in a day, 8.5 million breaths in a year. And for children, it's double. Seems to me we would all want quality air in order to thrive and be healthy. You wouldn't order a glass of swamp water at a restaurant rather than bottled or sparkling, or purchase unsafe recall toys for kids. You wouldn't have a loved one in a nursing facility you knew to be unsafe. So that's why we're here tonight. We are here in search of a common sense understanding that this community in southern Person County requires a safe environment. Allowing an air quality permit to this toxic chemical gas-pewing LNG facility of Dominion in the middle of a rural county with two-lane winding roads, no water lines, spotty cell service, and a small volunteer, ill-equipped fire department does not purport to make it safe. This facility could be releasing toxic carcinogens into our atmosphere. You said formaldehyde, acrylon. Acrylon is known to deplete glutathion. Glutathion is what we need in order to detoxify toxins, so it's insanely maddening. And I'd like to just say that Dominion is known to be an unreliable partner, and it hasn't exceeded permits by hundreds of pounds of pollutants. And what is a reasonable estimate of highly toxic chemicals to be released? Do you measure these estimates along with the abundance of other particulates we in southern Person experience, such as coal ash from the coal ash dump or pollutants from HEICO? All these pollutants are cumulative. They do not be released in a vacuum. So how do they all interact together, perhaps more negatively than statistically measured? Hopefully, you have many neutral, non-gas industry analysts and environmental scientists checking this out. And one last thing. I would like you to deny this permit. I don't want you to just make it that they do this or they do that. Please deny it. And as you've listened for these three minutes, I would like you to recognize we all took about 60 breaths. So just imagine, just imagine that that air was filled with formaldehyde, acrylon, sulfur dioxide, benzene, methane, unknown toxic particles. Don't let that be. Please deny it. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for gathering here today to discuss this issue that profoundly impacts our community, our environment, and our future we envision for ourselves and generations to come. I stand before you to address this proposition that is, at the core, raises the significant concerns regarding safety, health, environmental impact, and our commitment to sustainable I urge each member of this community to reconsider its implications allowing a natural gas storage tank in our metis. We are faced with the opportunity to stand united for health, safety, environmental stewardship, and a sustainable future. Let's not allow short-term gains to overshoot the long-term consequences that can affect not only our lives today but the well-being for our generations yet to come. Together, we have the power to protect our community and demand a future that aligns with our values. Let us stand firm against the proposal of the Mariah Energy Center, instead advocate for a safe, healthy, and sustainable neighborhood for us all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Arant. I live in Durham. You might ask why I just rode 40 miles through three counties on a school night to talk to you about an air permit for a facility that's not even located in my city. But the Mariah Energy Center affects North Carolina citizens all over Durham County and Wake and Orange and beyond, as well as Person. While my home might not be in Roxborough, our community's food, drinking water, utilities, and natural resources are all connected, and they don't stop at a county line. For months now, community members have been seeking answers from Dominion to what seem like obvious questions. What are the risks posed by this facility? What is the plan if something goes wrong? How will this affect the land, the water, the air we breathe that our children and grandchildren might breathe through the life of this facility? But Dominion has refused to answer even the most basic questions, no matter how many times they're asked or by whom. If the Mariah Energy Center really poses no risk whatsoever, as we've been assured by Dominion, why are they working so hard to keep us in the dark? The reason Dominion chose Person County is clear: the land is cheap and the regulations are minimal. So far, they've only provided the bare minimum of information required of them, which is just an estimate of their projected emissions. These estimates, however, are likely to be insufficient, as research has shown in modeling of the levels of gases such as formaldehyde has been found to underestimate real levels. One study found that in North Carolina, real levels of formaldehyde were 1.4 to 1.6 times greater than typical estimates. Even more troubling, however, is the fact that we have no way of knowing if Dominion's estimates, even if they are produced in good faith, turn out to be accurate. Not only does this leave the company free to be as conservative or even deliberately inaccurate as they care to be with their estimates, it leaves the public in the dark about the real risk and the safety of the air that they breathe. I am an early childhood teacher working with children aged 3 to 6. Many of my students have already had COVID and RSV before they even enter first grade. The long-term impact of these viruses is still not fully understood, and scientists project that the prevalence of new viruses will increase as climate change continues to take effect in the coming decades. On top of that, there have already been days in North Carolina when our air quality is affected by forest fires, another threat that will increase with climate change, even when those fires are taking place many states away. I fear for my students and the air they breathe and the world they're facing. I owe it to them to come here tonight and ask you to deny this air permit application and hold Dominion to a standard of safety and quality that we need for the world that we and our children deserve. Thank you.
My name is Lib Huchbee. I reside in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. According to what you have given us for education purposes, it says, "Air dispersion modeling reviewed by DAQ shows the facility's emissions of toxic air pollutants are expected to comply with applicable standards." I really question, based on the information that I have already heard from the speakers before me, how in the world can you just say you're going to expect it to happen? We need to know that it will happen. We need to know that you will deny the Mariah Energy Center air permit because we do not want this energy center in Roxborough. I live in Chapel Hill. If we're going to breathe the same air within 15 minutes of being in the same room, maybe a smaller room than this, but it has been pointed out, the health that is needed. It's also been pointed out from your brochure, because I just happened to attend your SLIP meeting, the Dominion Energy. So I brought it with me tonight, because I just wanted you to know that it's for sure that there will be emissions. And the way this was designed and proposed here, there will be emissions, and now we're saying, well, there might be emissions once a month, there might be, you know, once a day. Well, who wants to have that kind of threat hanging over you? I really feel so sorry for all these people who live within the, like the neighbor is living within yards of a threat for their lives, for their children, for their grandchildren's lives. You must deny this permit. The healthy creek is essential. The healthy employees who work there, even though there are few, it's necessary. The health, all of our health, is essential, and we say we do not want this permit. Deny the permit and prevent intercan-disruption from toxic carcinogens. Prevent asthma. Prevent, rather than allowing this to happen and then say, oh, well, we're going to put monitors here, and we're going to put monitors over there. You don't have to do this. When you prevent an illness, let's think about polio, for example, in Gaza. How amazing it would have been if it could have been prevented in the first place. This air permit is not necessary, and everyone in this room, as far as the people I have met so far and listened to, with the exception of this one gentleman who works for the company, has not mentioned the fact that Enbridge is actually going to have something to do with this after it's built. It should never have been permitted to start in the first place.
Thank you, Ms. Huchbee. Michael Savino. Christopher Fair. Lisa Plaisman.
Hi, I'm Michael Savino. I live 1.3 miles south of this proposed site. And my background is I have a bachelor's in systems engineering from Michigan State University. I worked on renewable energy projects in Lesotho in the 80s. And back then, we knew that burning fossil fuels caused pollution. It was not a mystery then, and we knew they were going to run out. This was, you know, 45 years ago when I was in college. And yet, we're continuing with this build-out. And the other thing is that there are other ways to provide reliable electricity than with natural gas, which is quite unreliable when there's very cold weather, such as solar plus storage, which has proven to be cheaper and more reliable. Now, I know that's not your job to evaluate that. Also, we could have the air be cleaner by investing more in conservation rather than more infrastructure, like if we weatherize the 100,000 most leaky houses in the Triangle, then they wouldn't need this facility to meet peak demand on those eight days a year when they don't have enough. So there's other ways to make the air much cleaner without building this facility. Where I live, there's a creek that runs through the property, Dial Creek, and I used to see otters swimming in there. I used to see fish making these minnows, making these little nests out of pebbles. But now what I see is the water is, since the pre-construction activities, the water is cloudy. It looks like coffee with way too much cream in it, very chalky, and I've never in 18 years I've lived there seen it like that. Dominion promised us that they would take care of our water, and they did not. And even when they had a month when there was absolutely no rain, and they didn't get their act together to clean it up, they've been at it for many months. They've had, I don't know how many months, about four or five months to make it clean, and it's still running cloudy. So their word is worth nothing. So how can we trust them to clean the air when they've demonstrated to us that they can't keep their word on the water? So I'm asking you to deny their permit. Tell them to come back when they've proven that they've earned the right to operate this facility, when they've proven that they can at least get the water clean. Otherwise, they have no right to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savino. Christopher Fair.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Fair. I guess I represent not only my wife and myself, but the three counties that Person County and Dominion just cleverly left out of this. If you look at the great little map you handed out today, you notice there's more of Granville County, Durham County, and Orange County exposed to this plant than there is in Person County. I live 1,000 yards east of the Person County line. I don't think, as an earlier speaker said, that gas and pollutants honor county lines. Yet, we were not even informed about this. I had to have a fellow pastor tell me that this was happening three miles from my house. Nobody was notified, mail or any other reliable way. Our farm would be in a direct line of fire, and I like the little orange or yellow circle I've got here, because one of the things I did for 46 years in the Navy was deal with explosions. If a 25-million-gallon liquefied natural gas tank explodes, it's equivalent of 54 tons of TNT, which, that little yellow line, the blast wave, would still be supersonic. To be specific, 769 miles an hour. And I don't care what you put it in, the pollutants at 769 miles an hour are not stopping at that edge of that circle or at the county line, and it's going to wipe out the folks nearby. I have a master's degree in weapons systems engineering. I have a master's degree in weapons systems engineering, and my thesis was in warhead design. That's the equivalent of 54 2,000-pound bombs, you know, the kind that level entire city blocks in Gaza, and you want to put that out here in the rural countryside. I've seen no studies, no emergency response studies. I've seen a lot of estimates of pollutants, but I haven't seen anything that has a reliable. They have other plants. Why can't they give us numbers from those? We get stonewalled, nothing like that. I had to go through a massive groundwater study because I put in an 800-foot gravel driveway in Granville County because they were worried about the quality of the groundwater. And they've done nothing here, and yet they tell us formaldehyde, benzene, those are all carcinogens. Those are all going to be there. They may not be PFAs, but they have half-life of decades and decades, once they get in the groundwater and in the flowing water in the area. Not to mention volatiles. Where are the 51 tons of volatiles? The wind around here goes in my direction from that plant. Are you going to put up a wall at the county line to keep it from hitting my house, my grandchildren, our animals, our neighbors? Think about it before you approve this. There's a lot of questions.
I'm Diane Lessman, 106 Elderberry Lane, Rougemont, Person County. I begin with the mission statement of the DAQ. The Division of Air Quality works with the state's residents to protect and improve outdoor or ambient air quality in North Carolina for the health, benefit, and economic well-being of all. We're all here to protect our outdoor air quality, and I appreciate the opportunity for citizens to present their concerns about Dominion's proposed LNG project in Person County. Quoting again, "To carry out this mission, the DAQ operates a statewide air quality monitoring network to measure the level of pollutants in the outdoor air. But how will you proceed since the Dominion project presents a combination of pollutants not within the scope of current air monitoring systems?" Continuing to quote from the DAQ website, "The DAQ develops and implements plans to meet future air quality initiatives, issues clear and comprehensive permits, assures compliance with air quality rules, and educates, informs, and assists the public with regard to air quality issues. If current permits and air quality rules fall short of addressing this new set of air quality issues, are those permits basically meaningless? Will you develop and enforce new plans that address future air quality initiatives, as stated in this description of what you are tasked to do? And how will you educate, inform, and assist the public?" My point, if you don't know exactly how air quality will be impacted by this plant, how can you be assured, how can we be assured, that pollutants are at acceptable levels according to state and federal regulations? Any emissions calculations by Dominican Energy or Enbridge are likely to be significantly underestimated. Modeling is not sufficient. There is no state monitoring for the pollutants of specific concerns, acryline, benzene, formaldehyde, and hexane, and Dominion has not agreed to fund independent air monitoring to determine true concentration levels. Acryline is a hazardous air pollutant, flammable, reactive, and can be toxic. Regarding benzene, the Department of Health and Human Services states it is carcinogenic, as does the International Agency for Cancer Research and the EPA. Formaldehyde is a highly toxic systemic poison that is absorbed by inhalation. The vapor is a severe respiratory tract skin irritant. Chronic or long-term exposure to hexane in air causes polyneuropathy, the simultaneous malfunction of many peripheral nerves throughout the body, causing numbness in the extremities, muscular weakness, blurred vision, headache, and fatigue. Who needs any of it? Now, in closing, please don't give Dominion Energy carte blanche to threaten the health of hundreds of people living near the Mariah Energy Center. Thank you.
He'll be right up. Nice to meet you. My name is Jeffie Hammerquist, 33, farmer, Rougemont, North Carolina. Got a little friend for you here. This is a very serious matter. I'm here to adamantly request your denial of Dominion Energy's air permit for the Mariah Energy Center on Mariah Helena Moran Road in Rougemont, North Carolina. The air permit that they are attempting to obtain is said to contaminate North Carolina's precious remaining rural agricultural space. It's no big secret that America's farmland is shrinking. Most viable plots of farmland have already been subdivided into new neighborhoods for unaffordable housing. What is left over is being threatened by heavy industrial projects like the Mariah Energy Center. My organic farm, where we practice environmentally sustainability through permaculture, is one mile directly downhill and downstream from the contamination site. On my farm, we raise all-organic pasture grazing, cattle, lamb, goat, chickens, ducks, and more. I chose this location after searching all over this state for pristine, safe farmland. I am here not only on my behalf, but on behalf of many farms in the line of fire, not only here, but all throughout the southeast, which is currently being neglected. I am also here for all the family farms that have vanished from this country over the last two decades due to situations just like this one. Plants like the Mariah Energy Center emit high levels of greenhouse gases and hazardous air pollutants, like you've already heard, formaldehyde miles around, in what their own industry turns as a sacrifice zone. These pollutants being in our air, water, and soil make the land uninhabitable for miles around surrounding the facility to children, pets, livestock, and wildlife. My 12-year-old son lives and farms with me every day on the farm. We cannot and will not relocate, like my ancestors who were run out of Germany in the 30s. Okay? I underwent open-heart surgery for a genetic heart condition in October of 2022, and I don't need to call my cardiologist up and get him on the line to say that I don't need formaldehyde in my diet. You know what I mean? Okay? The Dutch mental impact of these hazardous air pollutants is well documented and unanimously agreed upon by science. By allowing Dominion's air contamination of agricultural land, you take away the freedom of the working man. You take away their right to self-determination. By sacrificing the last of America's natural space, we sacrifice the last of America's grip on the natural world, i.e., reality. Do you understand what is at stake here? Okay? Dominion Energy has craftfully navigated legal loopholes to bypass the need for a valid water permit. You've already heard what they did there. You at the DAQ, as the individuals presiding over this matter, are the last line of defense for this community. We tried relying on the Person County Commissioners to represent us, and now we fight them through democratic lawful process in both the courts and in the ballot boxes. We will fight every day that this matter persists, on behalf of this country, on behalf of this planet, that we should all share more gracefully. If the Department of Air Quality, employed under the umbrella of the Federal Department of Environmental Protection, does not care to say no to energy conglomerates taking from the environment for financial gain, then what exactly does this department exist to do? Thank you.
I am Jeffrey Hammerquist III. I am 12 years old, and I live on a small farm in Rougemont, North Carolina. The Mariah Energy Center is currently being built 1.3 miles, 1.03 miles away from my small farm in Rougemont. I'm concerned for my animals' health, my own health, and the sacred lands with all the wildlife on its health, too. I request that you deny their permit. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hammerquist. I've gotten a little bit. Next one is Oceon, Canada.
I'm 29. I'm here representing myself, my family that just spoke, and also my farm, Happy Monkey Farm. I live about one mile away from the site getting developed by Dominion Energy. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental, agricultural, and life sciences, and a master's degree in business administration. I'm a full-time farmer at our farm, Happy Monkey Farm, raising sheep, goats, ducks, chickens, and growing a garden. I'm here to ask you to deny the Mariah Energy Center's request for an air permit. I have many concerns with the MECC, and first and foremost is that it is part of a gas spill-out which will make climate change worse. In 2024, we know that climate change is having a serious impact on all human lives. The effects of climate change have been and will continue to not only impact North Carolina's economy, but the health of each and every citizen, starting with our youngest and our eldest. No greenhouse gases are acceptable. I believe we have to care for our people, and we cannot let big companies pollute our soils, waters, and air. The Mariah Energy Center will emit greenhouse gases and toxic chemicals like formaldehyde into the air. These have no health risks to all, especially those living in close proximity. My farm is just a mile away. I raise a homeschool 12-year-old boy who gets to study school topics and enjoy the rural fresh air. I worry about his health. I just got married last year, and we would like to have more children. I worry about their health and future. My husband and I have also been planning to start a small farm camp for kids ages 4 to 15, and now I worry about these children's health. Would parents want to drop off their children at a beautiful farm that's in the sacrifice zone of a heavy industrial site? The Mariah Energy Center is directly affecting our ability to start our business and to make a livelihood. What concerns me even more is that the reports of air testing are made by Dominion Energy themselves. Who can ensure that these values are accurate? I don't mean to lie to trust, I just know that in North Carolina, models underestimate the real-life measures of formaldehyde. In addition, when the development of the site began, we were assured that proper measures would be taken to protect our water from construction sediment. Yes, just days after the site was deforested, the water in our stream started running milky. Our creeks are part of the Tar River Conservancy. They used to run clear, host all sort of life. Now Dominion Energy has polluted our waterways, so no, I don't trust that we can take Dominion's word on this. We need third-party testing. As members of the Department of Air Quality and of the Department of Environmental Quality, I believe you are here to protect our air and that you care about the environment. All the people here today, whether they be from Person or Durham County, are like you. We're people who care about our air and our planet. We have been fighting against the Mariah Energy Center and its pollution for months. You are our last hope. Since we all breathe the same air, we count on you to do the right thing and help us keep it clean. Please deny the request for the air permit. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to meet with us. I am here to talk with you about inconsistencies, inconsistencies that are glaring. The town of Roxboro rewrote their zoning laws, but the Mariah Energy Center is still inconsistent with those laws. The current, as of yesterday, zoning laws do not allow for the storage of hazardous materials in any zone. There's an MSDSG, not surprisingly from OSHA, that classifies LNG as hazardous. Further, the county commissioners and Dominion are in litigation over zoning irregularities. This is another inconsistency. Attached to Dominion's air permit is a DAQ policy memo. It is from the chief of permitting. It prohibits the DAQ from working on permits with inconsistencies. But, speaking of inconsistencies, the DAQ is part of some very serious irregularities. This project is in direct conflict and inconsistent with the intent of Executive Order 80. Executive Order 80 established an inter-agency council to address climate change. Did you know the secretary of the DEQ is the chair of the council? The goal of the council, just like House Bill 951, is to reduce carbon emissions by 70% and find alternative energy sources. One of the council's tenants is no regrets. The MECC would tie us to carbon emissions and other pollutants for another 30 years. Dominion will tell you the plant is needed to keep line pressures up. Transco was able to increase line pressures with the South Side Reliability Enhancement Project. Dominion will also tell you the gas is needed to heat homes. What about heat pumps and induction ranges? Oh, yeah, those furnaces and ranges also put out more greenhouse gases. There are tax breaks for both heat pumps and rooftop solar. These are viable, efficient alternatives. Please, the time is now. Your climate report, your climate report makes it abundantly clear, North Carolina continues, needs to consider these efficient, cleaner alternatives. It is ridiculous to use electricity to produce LNG and then store it in North Carolina heat for 357 days. There is no way this is efficient. Executive Order 80 and House Bill 951 give the DEQ a mandate to protect our environment and climate. Please, no regrets. Reject this project.
I request the permit be denied. Dominion has proven they do not intend to avoid harmful impacts in our community or county because of the way they've handled the problem of water quality. I live less than two miles from the site, and I won't say any more about this because other people have spoken about the same situation, but they have not addressed water quality, so why would they address air quality? We can expect the same thing with air quality. They're supposed to be, to self-monitor and report annually. But you know, there is no way they will ever report that they have exceeded emissions, no matter what the emissions actually are. To have any meaningful protection of air quality, you would need baseline information and regular monitoring by an independent party and enforceable consequences if limits are exceeded. In addition, I assume this permit is only for this first development phase. They are already planning to double the size of the facility. Do their calculated emissions include the expansion? If not, then they've reported only half the emissions they actually expect. Doubling their emissions would probably require a more stringent permit now, and this permit should be denied if that's the case. This permit gives them free rein to do whatever they want and gives us, the county and community, no protection at all for air quality. As a permit, it seems to accomplish nothing. Please deny the permit.
Again, please deny Dominion Energy's air quality permit for Mariah Energy Center. My name is Tracy Clayton Sexton. I'm actually the other pastor who asked Reverend Fair to be here as well. My family's farmland is five miles from MECC. If you do not deny them, please require them to follow Title V requirements. Just this week, Dominion made North Carolina headlines due to a gas leak in Wendell. The town of Wendell's Facebook page had the following update on 7/30/24. 2:55 p.m., as a precaution, all residents of Anderson Farms and Edgemont Landing have been alerted to seal their homes, close windows, doors, and turn off their HVAC units due to a natural gas leak on Old Battle Bridge Road. Dominion Energy is on the scene, working on the issue. Dominion is proceeding at Mariah Energy without a risk management plan. Please require them to have Please require them to have a plan. Will people in Person County be expected to close their windows and doors and turn off their HVAC if there's a problem at MEC? Residents should be prepared by Dominion for any possible scenarios. Dominion has not been a good communicator to the residents of Person County. Dominion's self-assessment about their impact on water quality was incorrect. Apparently, they did not want to be bothered with following state regulations, so they used modeling and assessments that underestimated their impact on local streams that support endangered species and feed Durham's drinking water supply. The turbidity they have created exceeds the state's regulations, and even though citizens' water sampling has made the state aware of the problem, as of yet mitigation and/or cease and desist order has not been enforced by the state. Therefore, to protect the air and our health, we need the state to protect us from this huge corporation and ensure our air quality. Again, please deny this air permit, or at least require them to follow Title V regulations. Dominion is a pass-through corporation doing the setup work for a sellout to Enbridge, a Canadian company with the worst possible environmental record in the energy industry. Dominion is out for its own profit margins, and as evidenced by the changes they have made in our watershed, they seek to squeak bylaws and regulations for their own ease and profit. Please use your authority to protect us. Other concerns that I have. If Dominion's project is approved, I think they should be a good neighbor and pay for an upgrade of the cell service and internet connection for themselves and the neighbors. That section of Helena, Mariah, has poor cell service and poor web connection. If there's an emergency, Dominion's workers need to be able to communicate via cell to call for help. The area is served by volunteer fire departments. They, these people, don't even have a clue what's coming. Dominion should have to staff and equip a full-time fire department. That explosion in Washington State was named, another city, because of that explosion had to be enticed with a $5.5 million Puget Sound Energy grant, if you want to call it that, to strengthen the fire department. Also, COP 28. When I, when I mentioned IPCC recommendations and how, that's Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change recommendations and how that they are not living into them, I was appalled that the site manager for Mariah Energy Center didn't seem to know anything about the 2023 COP 28. And when I spoke to him at that information and public meeting, Dominion isn't sharing with his employees that the world's experts are saying fossil fuels have got to be abandoned, and instead Dominion is building out infrastructure for their own profit and to the detriment of our planet. Please deny this project.
Thank you, Tracy. Emily Wilkins.
Wilkins.
Wilkins. I'm sorry, Wilkins. Ralph McCoy and Teresa Aaronz.
Good evening. My name is Emily Wilkins. I live at 611 Ruby Street in Durham, North Carolina, on 0.22 acres in the flood zone. I want you to know that regularly Dominion Energy has to be called to my neighbors' homes where their connections are leaking. And what I need you to know is that gas flows downhill, and it comes into my yard, and it makes it so that I am dizzy, so that I have trouble breathing. I have asthma. I'm a lifeguard for the city of Durham, and I need to be able to breathe to keep my job. As a water drinker, I turn on the tap that comes out of Lake Mickey that comes from this area. I need to know that that tap water is not contaminated with things that will make my children sick. I need for people's fertility to not be affected by water quality or pollution. When it impacts hormones, it disrupts hormones. I had a son and a daughter, and now I have two daughters. Funny, I don't know where it comes from, but it's either the air or the water because we raised our kids well. I don't know what's going on in the environment, that our kids are becoming trans. I don't know where that's coming from. I don't understand that. And I suspect that it's something about pollution. I'm not a scientist. I'm a linguist. I speak four languages, and I can't talk my way out of this. Please deny, please deny, please deny this air permit. It's not the right place. It's not the right time. It's not the right way to solve whatever problem you think this is going to resolve. People don't need more money. We need clean air, clean water, clean land, clean food. We need to be healthy. We need to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Ralph McCoy. Teresa Aaronz.
Good evening. Thank you for seeking out public comment on the Mariah Energy Center. My name is Ralph McCoy, and my wife and I have been residents of Timberlake, Person County for five years, and I've been a resident of North Carolina for two-thirds of my nearly 60 years. While we have many concerns about this project and how it has gotten to this point, I will only address my concerns in terms of environmental impact, mainly air quality. My understanding of the project, it's a layman's understanding, is that the product brought in on the pipeline will be further refined in the site for consumer use. This processing, from my layman's understanding, has byproducts of acrylene, benzene, formaldehyde, and hexane, released into the air, which all have health risks. My understanding is this draft of the air quality permit only requires Dominion Energy to calculate their emissions and not to actually measure them at the site or surrounding properties. To use the Russian proverb made famous by Ronald Raich, "Trust but verify." Trust but verify is a sensible approach. We need third-party monitoring of air quality to protect the nearby community. We have a long history of simply trusting big business in this state, and sometimes it works for benefit, but sometimes the citizens get burned. One needs to look no further than the PFAS contamination of Cape Fear River, which went unchecked for years and is now costing the citizens of New Hanover and Brunswick Counties hundreds of millions of dollars in additional water treatment, with so far no recompense from the original polluter. Not to mention the long-term health effects for their citizens. Unlike metropolitan Wilmington, Person County is in no position to pay for any future negative effects. Mariah Energy Center provides no real benefit to the local community and perhaps many long-term issues. We request independent third-party review of Dominion's air quality modeling. We also request analysis of public health impacts of the facility as required by Section 10 of Executive Order 292, which requires each cabinet agency, including DEQ, to consider public health impacts in permitting decisions. We also requested this air quality monitoring model, model to one hour maximum and average concentration for hazardous air pollutions like acrylene and formaldehyde. We also requested this modeling include formaldehyde precursors. In summation, I request that you deny the Mariah Energy Center draft air quality permit.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Teresa Aaronz. Hope Taylor. Paul Childers.
Thank you for allowing our testimony tonight. I respectfully ask that you deny this permit based on safety, environmental, financial, moral, and humanity issues. To save time, I will not repeat what these fine humans have already spoken about or will speak soon after me. They're much smarter and more elegant than I'll ever hope to be. And instead, please allow me to tell a story with you, DAQ, as an important chapter. In September of '23, only 11 months ago, I knew about 10 people in this room. I was living my best retired life in a place called Elderberry in Rougemont, where my husband and I had just moved. Then Dominion Energy published a letter in The Courier-Times and sent only one letter to our 18-home community telling us about the soon-to-be-built Mariah Energy Center. We started asking questions, and we sent them to the regulatory agencies that we believed were created to protect us. One of these groups, the North Carolina Utilities Commission, without our permission, forwarded our questions to a company called Dominion Energy. John White from Dominion Energy responded and asked to meet with us at Elderberry. In October, six people from Dominion came to Elderberry with a canned presentation and handouts. We had hoped for straight answers to our questions, and unfortunately, that did not happen. And here we are today. Even if the truth hurt, had Dominion spoken with transparency and honesty, we would have known what was coming and would perhaps have formed some kind of understanding and rapport. But that was not to be. Fast forward nine months. Lots has happened since that October meeting, and I won't bore you with all the fantastic details. But you see the end result. In your emails, your voicemails, your post mail, and all those people sitting here, these beautiful, courageous people who have taken time to be here, to find this location, to be here, and speak to you as people to people, were asking you to do the right thing. Most of these people here are now our friends. They've studied LNG and Dominion. They've spent hours researching to give you words tonight, words that will get you to reconsider this air permit. You who are working at the DAQ have families and loved ones. Those working for the MEC and Dominion have families and loved ones. We have families and loved ones. I promise you, if we were to sit down together, we would find more connections than differences. It is simply the way of the world. We are concentrating on our differences now. But what if we stop, take a breath, and see what those connections are? Breathable air, clean drinking water, safety in our homes and communities. If we consider our connections, maybe, just maybe, we can all win. Because maybe one of us has the magic words that will get you to do the right thing and deny this air permit. DAQ, you can be the hero of this story. Find the connections. Make all of us safe for generations. Your families and loved ones are counting on you. We are counting on you.
Ms. Aaronz. Hope Taylor. Paul Childers. And Amy Moore.
I'm Hope Taylor, Executive Director of Clean Water for North Carolina, a statewide, science-based, environmental justice nonprofit with members in 60 North Carolina counties, including Person and the other counties adjacent to the Mariah Energy Center site. We are opposed to the development of this facility, which is being driven by economic interests and will not serve the people of Person County, and especially in the vicinity of the site. Instead, the MEC is part of a major gas development strategy that is being, causing adverse water quality impacts already and will significantly, directly and indirectly worsen climate impacts and cause North Carolina to more deeply fail to reach its emissions reduction targets without providing the actual improved energy reliability for regional customers that Dominion promises. The MEC's potential for harmful, toxic, and hazardous air emissions with limited modeling using emission factors that can best be characterized as optimistic also provides major safety hazards from this large LNG facility, and they are being selectively imposed on an area which has the least potential to benefit from the facility and is remote from locations of first responders with the capacity to deal with a fire or explosion at such a site or any injuries that could result. As a member of Granville County's Local Emergency Planning Committee, I raised this issue at the latest meeting of the committee where emergency management told me that they were completely unaware of the planned facility or its lack of a risk management plan. Very often, the location of such a large industrial facility with potential adverse effects is planned for an area of low population that's seen by industry as a means to reduce opposition. But it is also a way to locate remotely from regulatory offices or monitoring. In this case, this facility was also located in a county where the energy industry already has disproportionate economic and political influence. The lack of regulatory accountability is already manifest in the lack of agency response to repeated reports of significant turbidity exceedances downstream of the site. The lack of ambient air monitoring in the area is another indication that DAQ has little expectation of being able to hold the facility accountable for air quality exceedances. At the very least, DAQ must require fence-line monitoring for hazardous and toxic emissions, as well as methane measurement close to every piece of equipment that will process or transport gases to accurately assess fugitive emissions and require immediate corrective action. This facility is unfit to meet the intended purpose of reliability, may not even be able to make gas available for power generation under extreme weather conditions, and poses unjustifiable risks to the community that would be forced to host it. DAQ should deny this permit.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next, we have Paul Childers. Followed by Amy Moore. And then Valerie Han Thompson.
Hey, just a point of note. I think you left my wife off. Andrea, she signed me up. I'm Paul.
Yeah, her name wasn't on the slip call button.
Yeah, but she asked. What did you ask?
I asked if I had to fill out one of those papers to speak to, and they said no, that I was already on the list. So I signed up to speak as well for him and Ashley. Okay. Well, as you.
All right, great. All right. My name is Paul Childers, and I've lived in Person County 31 years. I live less than a half a mile from the MEC site. I am directly impacted by the MEC operations and its impact to my environment. I'm here to request that you deny the MEC draft air quality permit as written. Here are some of my concerns and questions as it relates to the air permit. Number one, Part A, Section 9, Page 16, notification requirements. This section details how the MEC will address excess emissions that last for more than four hours. At what point does this become a public safety concern? And how would that be mitigated differently from what is written in the air permit? According to Rusty from Dominion, there won't be any accidents, as he told my wife at the May 23 Dominion Open House in Roxboro. Trusting corporations is why we now have permits, among other requirements and regulations, and I don't trust Rusty. I requested the MEC provide residents in the area with a written risk management plan to address issues with the site and how the neighbors will be notified when an emergency occurs. This document needs to detail roles and responsibilities when an emergency occurs that would affect my life, well-being, or have an impact on the environment. Accidents do and will happen. Watch the news. Number two, Part A, Section 15, Limitation to Avoid 15A NCAC 2Q.0501, Page 18 and 19. The way I understand it, this facility is classified as a synthetic miner, which has potential emissions in excess of the major source threshold, but accepts federally enforceable limitations that keep emission levels below this major source threshold. According to this permit, those limitations are based on the various equipment combustion rates of natural gas, fuel gas, and flaring required to operate this facility. The potential for carbon monoxide emissions is 95 tons per year at this site, with the Title V limit being 100 tons per year. This is too close to the exemption limit. I request DAQ to require Dominion to submit a Title V air permit, which includes third-party monitoring of Title V pollutants. Number three, this facility will store 25 million gallons of liquefied fracked methane in Phase 1 and an additional 25 million gallons in Phase 2. As I'm sure you are aware, methane is not clean. It is a fossil fuel and the second-most abundant greenhouse gas, which is 80 times more potent than carbon dioxide. There is no mention of controlling or allowing methane to be emitted from this site. We have limits for other materials, but not methane. A thinking person would know that processing all of this methane will lead to cumulative losses of methane during each step of processing and storage. I request that you require Dominion to submit third-party monitoring of methane emitted from this site during liquefaction, transport, and regas- from this site during liquefaction, transport, and regasification processes. I'm not talking about leak detection, but knowing the actual amount of methane the site is emitting in a known timeframe. At some point, our state agencies and elected officials need to require more from the corporations to keep this country clean and its citizens safe, and not just rubber stamp these fracked methane projects as a clean energy solution. Let's start now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Childers. Ms. Childers, would you like to... Next will be Katie Moore and Valerie Anne Johnson.
It's good, I'm not used to it. Just used to a teeny tiny little room. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Andrea Childers. I've lived in southeast Person County for almost 32 years. My home is half a mile from the Mariah Energy Center. I'm a liberal arts kind of person, so when my husband starts talking all that science-y stuff, my eyes usually glaze over, and I'm sorry, I can't read this permit and point out specific mistakes or questions I have, but what I can do is I can understand basic deductions. This week, I Googled "impact climate change has on the ability to accurately predict weather," and tons of articles appeared. For example, this one from Stanford Report, December 14, 2021. Climate of Chaos: Stanford Researchers Show Why Heat May Make Weather Less Predictable. Its first paragraph reads, "A Stanford University study shows chaos rains earlier in mid-latitude weather models as temperatures rise. The results: Climate change could be shifting the limits of weather's predictability, pushing reliable 10-day forecasts out of reach." So, you have a government agency that is supposed to protect its citizens, and Dominion Energy expects us to believe that data Dominion Energy is generating using weather models about toxic chemicals being emitted into our airs, especially formaldehyde, is accurate. Dominion is using a model that can no longer accurately give us a 10-day weather forecast. These chemicals literally have the ability to make us very sick, and in some cases, a thermal inversion could possibly kill us. By simply asking Dominion Energy to pay a third party to monitor our air, we would then know exactly what chemicals are in our air and if they pose any threat to living and surrounding, living people in the surrounding areas. This company, soon to be owned by the largest LNG provider on the continent, is spending hundreds of millions of dollars to build this facility. To ask them to spend a million or two more to ensure our health and safety is not undue burden. To require air monitoring is within the purview of DAQ. In fact, with the buildout of LNG that is coming to this county, it would be prudent to have air monitoring on both ends of this county to ensure residents are not poisoned. I honestly do not understand why you will not require this of MEC, and for that matter, all LNG facilities in the state. Think of how refreshing it would be to see a government agency acting proactively and preventing disaster instead of reacting to a crisis that will cost the taxpayers a lot of money. Why does this government agency continue to place the profits of fossil fuel businesses over that of its citizens it's supposed to serve? One last thing. You can tell me, one last thing, can you tell me which government agency is responsible for overseeing safety protocols for the Mariah Energy Center? We asked you, and you told us it was DOT. We asked DOT, and they said it was DEQ. Then we find out that it could be NCUC, but they told us they don't regulate LNG. So am I to understand that there is no North Carolina government agency that will be overseeing safety protocols of a 50 million gallon bomb being built less than a half a mile from my house? And one last thing, violations, to the guy who spoke to Safety of Dominion, 68 violations since 2000, $3.9 billion fines.
Thank you, Ms. Childers. Katie Moore, followed by Valerie Anne Johnson. Kathy Buckley.
Hi, y'all. My name is Katie Moore. I live in Roxborough, and I have been an environmental justice and air quality researcher for over a decade now. In my time doing that work across many states, I have come up against the same issues time and time and time and time again. I've stood in many meetings like this, and the process has been the same. So, this morning and yesterday, I was reading a wonderful book by Ryan Emanuel, who's a Lumbee scholar, he's a hydrologist at North Carolina State. It's called On the Swamp, and I would recommend that anybody, anybody in attendance read it, it's really wonderful. So he is speaking about his experience and the Lumbee experience in Robinson County. I'll point out before I start reading that Robinson County is dealing with many of the same companies, Dominion and Duke, that we are. Here he's speaking about tribal consultation. Whether the issue is tribal consultation or general public participation in decision-making about the environment, justice demands meaningful participation in decision-making by people on the front lines. In the United States, there's a long history of government agencies and corporations excluding tribal nations, racially marginalized groups, and poor people from decisions that saddle these communities with pollution, degrade the quality of their environments, and expose them to other harms. Environmental justice is the multifaceted struggle for remedies. Remedies that address the immediate concerns of communities overburdened by pollution and hazards, and remedies that address the underlying issues of power, racism, and colonialism. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency defines environmental justice as "the fair treatment and meaningful involvement." Fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people in environmental decision-making. The federal government aims to achieve environmental justice by directing federal agencies to identify and address the disproportionate impacts of their actions, including environmental permitting, on low-income and minority communities. The directive flows from 1994, presidential executive order signed by Bill Clinton after years of advocacy and research led primarily by grassroots religious and civil rights organizations. One of the critical sparks in the environmental justice movement happened in North Carolina, not far from where I, the author, lives. In the 1970s, a company in Wake County where the capital of Raleigh is located disposed of thousands of gallons of polyfluorinated biphenol PCB waste by dumping it illegally along hundreds of miles of rural backroads at night. The perpetrators were caught and convicted, but the state government was held responsible for disposing of massive amounts of PCB-contaminated soil. State officials decided unilaterally to build a landfill for the contaminated soil in a predominantly African-American community in Warren County. The decisions sparked protests that united community members with national civil rights leaders and environmentalists. During these protests, the terms "environmental justice" and "environmental racism" were coined. In the years that followed, advocates worked tirelessly to focus national attention on racial and socioeconomic disparities in the siting of toxic and polluting facilities, and on the general lack of concern for poor and minority communities when it came to decisions about the environment. We see these as connected issues, and we see that we're experiencing the same conditions that many across the state have experienced. And we ask you, we ask you to deny this permit, and we ask you to change the way that you do permitting, because it's clearly not achieving environmental justice goals. I'm also submitting written technical comments on behalf of Person County Community Action Network and many other environmental organizations across the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Valerie Anne Johnson. Kathy Buckley. And then Teresa Torian.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Valerie Anne Johnson, and I represent one of those organizations that was just spoken about, the North Carolina Environmental Justice Network. So I'll start with this. We request the denial and the rejection of Mariah Energy Center's draft air quality permit. So I read the words. More than just words, I'd like for y'all to consider a few things that came to mind as I listened to the testimony of these citizens of this state, North Carolina, who live in one of the most precious areas that we have left, our rural area, our agricultural area. And I thought about the air quality issue. And one of the issues is not just about what Dominion will be producing, it is also some secondary concerns that haven't been raised. So much has been talked about, but I'd like for y'all to also consider who is going to monitor those trucks that cause 20 to 30 to 40-minute delays. They're going, they're idling. And if, and I have been in an area where trucks are going up and down the road, two-lane road, in a rural area, and that air is not being monitored, but it is affecting the people who live and work and love there. Industry is not the most reliable or truthful entity in this whole scenario. I trust what the people have presented to you. I trust their lived experience, but also the research they've done in order to bring to you what are life-giving information. This is about life, the quality of living. You heard the 12-year-old. It's also about his birthright and the birthright of those children to be able to live as their grandparents, parents, uncles, aunties, everyone has imagined for them. And you have the ability to stop something that is noxious, that is toxic, that places a burden in an area that has become a sacrifice zone because the idea is that there are not that many people who live there who are going to be impacted. Well, I live in Granville County, and if it's happening in Person, it can happen anywhere else, and it is close enough that I have an interest as well. So yes, I'm speaking not just for the community, but for all of us, because we're all impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, we have Kathy Buckley. Teresa Torian. And then Valerie Anne Torian.
Good evening, staff members and fellow concerned North Carolinians. My name is Kathy Buckley. I live in the city of Raleigh on planet Earth, and I also work for the North Carolina Alliance to protect our people and the places we live. Taking good care of the air, the lifeline of all breathing beings on the planet, is indeed a tall and important task. I trust you work for DEQ and the Department of Air Quality because you care, and I commend you for your service. This facility would cool shale gas, primarily methane, to minus 260 degrees Fahrenheit. What could possibly go wrong? One facility, Cameron LNG, has had an average of two accidental releases due to equipment failure each month since beginning full operations in August 2020, according to reports. An explosion at the second-largest LNG plant in the United States, Freeport LNG, shut down production for months. Quote, "At 11:28 a.m. on June 8, the Freeport LNG facility experienced a boiling liquid expanding vapor explosion that resulted in the release of electrified natural gas, leading to the formation and ignition of a natural gas vapor cloud and subsequent fire at the facility. Operator fatigue was reportedly a contributing factor in the incident. Our atmosphere is a contained system, and the air we breathe is recycled. It has been breathed for millennia and will be breathed into the future. Thinking about what this facility will contribute to the air of the future is an aspect of your domain. As you know, our air is composed of an increasing amount of greenhouse gases. The facility will contribute to the escalating effect of climate change by adding methane to the atmosphere. That in and of itself is a compelling argument to deny the project. For contributing to the likelihood that many of us, due to climate change, will prematurely lose our ability to breathe is a mighty argument for an ultimate and emphatic no. Please request the additional information that has been requested tonight, and make your informed decisions as if you lived in Person County, just as you live on planet Earth. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Teresa Torian. Nolan Torian. And then Julie Buddy.
Hi, good evening. My name is Teresa Torian. I am a resident of southeastern Person County. I'm a parent of a current student at Helena Elementary, which is approximately five miles from the proposed site of the Mariah Energy Center. Most of my fellow Helena parents are unaware that this hearing is happening, and many still don't even know what the Mariah Energy Center is. I don't have the capacity to inform them, but both the NCDEQ and Dominion Energy do. I'm here tonight to request that you deny the Mariah Energy Center draft air quality permit. Hazardous air pollutant emissions from the Mariah Energy Center pose significant health risks to the surrounding community. Inhalations of pollutants like formaldehyde would cause irreparable harm to our neighbors and families. Dominion Energy should be required to implement safety features that would reduce the threat of a leak or explosion, including the creation of a risk management plan, double-wall tanks, and the implementation of a formal leak detection and repair program. Our community requests an independent third-party review of Dominion's air quality modeling. We also request analysis of public health impacts of the facility, as required by Section 10 of the Executive Order 292, requiring each cabinet agency, including DEQ, to consider public health impacts in permitting decisions. Currently, the community surrounding the proposed MEC has no data on air quality, instead relying on Dominion's calculated emissions, which are likely to be significantly underestimated. There is no state monitoring for the specific pollutants of concern nearby, and Dominion has not agreed to fund independent air monitoring to understand the true concentration levels. We know that Dominion stands to gain financially from the proposed MEC, however, the community doesn't. The Department of Environmental Quality and the Division of Air Quality's responsibility is to citizens first. Many people do not trust government agencies. Too many times, corporations like Dominion and their profits are chosen over the citizens of communities like Person County. Tonight, you have the opportunity to show citizens that they do in fact come first. On behalf of my children, neighbors, and the surrounding community, I'm asking you to reject the Mariah Energy Center's draft air permit, as it will only harm and not benefit the local community members. Thank you.
Teresa Torian. Nolan Torian. Julie Buddy. Heidi.
My name is Nolan Torian, and I live in Searl, North Carolina, in the southeastern part of Person County. In fact, my family has been living in southern Person County for at least 150 years. Tonight, I'm speaking to suggest that you reject the air permit for the Mariah Energy Center. One reason is because Dominion Energy has a history of violating air permits. Why would this... Why would this one be any different? Another reason to reject the air permit is the chemicals that the Mariah Energy Center emits. There are many harmful gases, such as formaldehyde, which is known to cause cancer, and acrylon, which can irritate the lungs. There are no physical air monitors in the area, which gives reason to believe that Dominion would give their own data, and this data can be incorrect. This permit should also be rejected because it doesn't benefit Person County, providing 12 full-time jobs and no energy to Person County. This, the Mariah Energy Center could affect my future in Person County. I plan to stay in Person County. I plan to start a business, maybe multiple, in Person County. I plan to start a family in Person County. I plan to help build a home in Person County. If the air permit is accepted and the Mariah Energy Center moves on, my plans and the plans of the next generation of Person County could be destroyed. I suggest you reject the air permit for the Mariah Energy Center, because this is just the beginning of my concerns with the Mariah Energy Center. And before I sit down, I'd like to say that I would appreciate a responsive writing as to why this needs a decision now and not in 30 days or more, so we can have a second hearing in Person County where the people are most directly affected.
Good evening. My name is Julie. While I live in here, I care deeply about my neighbors in Person County, because everyone has the right to clean air and a sense of security. And like others have aptly mentioned, county borders mean nothing to air pollution. I'm here today to request that the DAQ deny the air permit application for the Mariah Energy Center. And this is for a variety of reasons. Number one, Dominion should be required to submit a Title V air permit. The limited potential emissions for carbon monoxide are within 5% of the Title V threshold and PSD limits at 95 tons per year. There's evidence that facility-derived emission factors underestimate true emissions. Freeport LNG in Texas emitted hundreds of tons of unauthorized nitrogen oxide pollution and violated the air permit. There's an 8 million gallon LNG storage facility at the Port of Tacoma in Washington, and it's been in operation for two years and has violated its air permit 19 times. And that's only the self-reported times. Researchers at the Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League, or BRELL, conducted modeling for the MEC and found that it would be out of compliance with the Nitrogen Dioxide National Ambient Air Quality Standard, or NACs, one-hour standard of 100 ppb. This indicates that this facility would be a major source of air pollution. I request that you look closely at the BRELL modeling, which Katie Moore submitted in the written comment, and get further third-party analysis of Dominion's modeling. Number two, we also don't yet know how Enbridge's plans to acquire PSNC would affect the ownership of MEC's air quality permit in the future. The draft air quality permit states that this permit is non-transferable to future owners and operators. I request that you do not move forward until you have a clear understanding of the implications of the merger. On the July 11th meeting where DAQ staff met with us, we asked the DAQ about the implications of Enbridge's plan, and DAQ responded on July 20th that the DAQ will ask Dominion about this and share the response once they have it. And I request that you don't move forward with this permit until you have that response. Reason number three, Section 1.2 of the air permit says that the detailed engineering of the project and associated air emissions generating equipment is still in progress, and that the final make and model of the equipment that will be installed is not available at this time. Before the DAQ issues this permit and gives Dominion the go-ahead for construction, Dominion needs to provide information on the specific air emission generating equipment that's going to be used. The point of this air permit is to regulate air emissions, so you would think that we would need to have the information on the equipment that's going to be generating those air emissions. Number four, I will abstract, and time has expired. I request the DAQ to require Dominion Energy to pay for independent third-party monitoring of formaldehyde, acrylon, and nitrogen dioxide, because the glycol heaters are a major source of formaldehyde with emissions of 117 ppb. If this came from the facility's turbines instead, then it would be well over the EPA limit of 91 ppb. Certainly, the important thing is the amount of formaldehyde being emitted rather than the source. That's all I suppose. Thank you.
Okay. Now I'm no longer nervous, because it's been so long, so I apologize to everyone. My name is Heidi Grable. I have grown up and now live five miles directly south of this proposed site in Durham County at 10607 Wilkins Road in Rougemont. I am a real estate agent because I choose to help my neighbors and residents do well in life and financially benefit with their homes, their safe places to return after work, to live their lives, and to breathe a relaxing breath at the end or beginning of each day. Please do not approve this air quality permit. I respect and appreciate the work that each of you do at DAQ, because my father, Paul Grable, worked for DAQ for 10 years in the Raleigh office, so I know what you all think about and do and process, and I appreciate it very much. We are here to talk about the site at 6633 Helena Mariah Road in the last untouched part of Person County, Durham County, and Granville County. I know it's at the edge, but it's the edge that affits a very nice, wonderful part of untouched land. As residents, we know that our air blows almost always west to east and from north to south. When you look at the map, you can see how that puts the residue contaminants from the proposed facility to fall from the air and affect all of the air, trees, and rainstorm runoff that lead to the Flat River, which winds all around this eastern and southern side of the proposed site, constantly. The Flat River and the runoff that feed it feed one of Durham's main drinking reservoirs, Lake Mickey, which supplies water to Durham and Wake County, especially in droughts. We are Durham and Wake County, being directly affected by this decision. We are the farms and woods that will absorb this runoff, yet we get no benefit from it. "It has to go somewhere," say some of my neighbors. "The storage tank is storage, like a piggy bank for the gas company, storing gas for when market prices are low and then selling it off when prices are up, not for the supply issue for the East Coast as the company tries to promote justify. So the company benefits at our expense." And Person County residents know this expense, this, their health. Most every family has known the C-word intimately and has been ravaged by cancer, the number-one killer in Person County. The Duke Energy smokestacks at Hiko Mayo Lakes have been blowing their contaminants, making it difficult to sell homes east of their sites. We have taken our share of the burden for this contamination for over 70 years. Burnt-off gases stink. Each time a tanker load or tank change will produce gases to be burnt off or released, there is no level of proposed monitoring to protect us, or not sufficient to tell us regarding an accident, leak, or even if day-to-day operations are not a burden to our residents in drinking water, and there is not a plan to communicate monitoring results to locals by third party. And if not prevented today, this is just the first of what will then open to the easier process, although how can it get easier, to allowing another storage tank and more contaminating sources of industry right here in our drinking water and the federally regulated watershed of Lake Mickey and the Neuse River Basin. Our area, this small, unadulterated corner of Person County, which will naturally have its air blown into Granville and Durham Counties, does not fit for this air contamination that is proposed. It does not have to go here. Please do not approve this air quality permit.
Good evening. My name is Robin Barefoot. I live in northern Durham County, within 25 miles from the Mariah Energy Center. I've lived there for 42 years or something. And I just have to tell this group that you impress me constantly with the level of detail and knowledge that you bring. They've done all the work for you guys and for DEQ and for Duke Energy and for Dominion Energy and for Enbridge, but we all know why we're here. We're here because we work and operate in America and also in the world in a shareholder economy. This is all about making money for these companies, and they don't give a damn what it looks like when it's over. And so I had written a letter, and I mailed it to you, but I'll drop it in the bucket here. Environmental degradation is a known and predictable outcome. Risk of property damage, personal injury, and death to residents is a known and predictable outcome. Gas is an outdated and unreliable source. There are countless technologies, but the power companies disincentivize them, and so we can't use those technologies because they don't want us to, because they have shareholders, and it's all about return on investment. This whole economy, this whole conversation is immoral. So whether the regulations approve it, whether the ordinance was violated, there is a right and a wrong that runs this universe, and this is wrong. Do not put this in air quality. Now is the time. This is the project. You can exercise your authority to protect air, water, ecosystems, and all the North Carolina residents who live within and are dependent upon air, water, and the ground. The people of Person County, and Durham, and this nation deserve government regulation that protects us against corporate greed. Thank you so much.
All right. Good evening, members of the Division of Air Quality and my neighbors in Person and surrounding counties. My name is Christine Smith. I'm a mom and a resident of Durham and the surrounding townwide area for nearly 20 years. I am here imploring you to deny Dominion's energy air quality permit for the Mariah Energy Center. Based on the Division of Air Quality's website, and this has been said before previously, the first sentence under "What We Do" states, "The Division of Air Quality works with the state's residents to protect and improve outdoor or ambient air quality in North Carolina for the health, benefit, and economic well-being of all." Current view of what to do is conflicting with the air quality permit for Dominion Energy, because LNG storage facilities put the health and economic well-being at serious risk for the people working at the facility, the immediate community, and surrounding areas. This air quality permit would allow Dominion Energy to enact a pollute without any independent monitoring. The only monitoring would come from Dominion Energy in a self-report once a year if they are emitting higher-than-allowable pollutants, including formaldehyde, classified as a carcinogen by the CDC. The air quality department also includes the use of two flares. An article referencing a study completed by the UNC School of Public Health found that in the United States, the following, and I quote, "Pollution from oil and natural gas, venting and flaring resulted in 7.4 billion in health damages, more than 700 premature deaths, and 73,000 asthma exacerbations among children annually." The researchers also found that emissions are underreported, and controlling emissions is not only profitable for the operators, but can significantly improve public health in surrounding communities. Regardless of how fossil fuel companies and associated coalitions frame any positive short-term gains of natural gas infrastructure, the net will negatively impact the air we breathe now and in the future. You all, the Division of Air Quality, have the choice to indeed protect the air quality for the health, benefit, and economic well-being of those in Person County and North Carolina. I urge you to deny the air quality permit for Dominion Energy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, and thank you very much for being here. It's very important for us that you have come here. I'm going to look a little bit more at the human aspect of what's been going on here. I think we're all human beings, and we all, were you able to stand in our shoes and experience what we've been through, you might have a different understanding of what's transpiring this evening. I'm 76 years old and retired in Rougemont. My presumption is that you have received lots of input regarding details of the proposed Dominion Energy Plant and the shocking amount of contaminants that will be spewed out once in operation without any oversight of the pollutants being monitored in the short or long term. I would like to briefly bring into focus a picture of the human context regarding those of us who are going to be directly affected and why you have not heard from many, many, many more of the thousands, tens of thousands of individuals and families from the greater community regarding this issue. Upon hearing that the Roxboro Commissioners were going to decide to move forward with a decision regarding the Dominion Gas Project, a call was pulled out to organize for a meeting. I would like you to try and be in our shoes of what we've been through at this point. 350 individuals attended the meeting. It was standing room only, the largest group ever to attend a Commissioner's meeting. No small thing. Thirty or so individuals from all walks of life respectfully articulated their concerns over a period of a couple of hours. To a person, all the comments focused on the questions of pollutants and quality of life issues. At the close of the public comments period, the Commissioners immediately took a vote without any conversation or reflection, completely disregarding the community input. A done deal, as if the heartfelt sharing of concerns had not happened. You guys, just like us, you know how the world turns. Those of us who are more directly affected, I live four miles from the site, have managed to maintain ongoing involvement. But most Person County community residents, plus those who live in all the adjacent counties who are going to be affected, as you well know, get gobbled up by the usual trials and tribulations of life. The day-to-day concerns take precedent over issues that might indeed be vital to their future lives. Were these thousands of individuals connected to this issue, this auditorium would be standing room only in an ideal world. The odds are completely stacked against us when one considers the financial, political, and industrial Goliaths, and that's the right word, Goliaths, that usually dominate the landscape. the landscape. Thousands of taxpaying individuals who do not have equal leverage, just like you don't as taxpaying individuals, if you were in this situation, are being bludgeoned by the realities of such dynamics regarding this issue. Not to mention those who might not even realize that this issue is at hand. We are living with our hearts in our mouths. It cannot be overstated that no one would gladly live for within 100 miles of the pollution. That is without question going to be contaminating the air we breathe and the manifold other detrimental effects upon the landscape. One could go on for hours just to talk about the landscape. We turn to you this evening that you see regardless of the disparities, that ultimately it is the common taxpayer who are being pushed to the side by those who are funded by us and it is the conglomerates who have the power, as you have already heard this evening. With these thoughts in mind, I beseech you, I beseech you, to deny the air permit until the manifold questions brought to your attention have been satisfied and I thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Alan.
I'm not going to make you pronounce that. Hi, my name is Carolyn Monje and I live in Elderberry Lane, which is a little less than two miles from the proposed Mariah Energy Center. As the daughter of someone who worked in a regulatory agency, I really appreciate what you have done. I know some of you came and listened to us in Rougemont and I thank you for the hearing tonight. I also realize how easy it would be for you to follow standard industry practices and simply allow this permit to go through, how easy it would be to overlook Dominion's convenient numbers on their application, to assume coincidence that their model just happens to be 5% below the level required for a Title V permit, how easy to ignore our evidence that Dominion has consistently lied to us from the very beginning of this project and to go ahead and trust that they would truthfully report that they are meeting all safe air requirements and even easier not to worry about Enbridge, a foreign monopoly with a horrific safety record, and assume that they will continue to be the ultimate provider of honest data affecting our health for decades to come. I also know that it's not your business, that Person County Government has disregarded their own zoning ordinances, totally ignored the opposition of the 350 citizens at that hearing, that they have shown no interest in the safety and health of the elementary school children, the senior citizen community where I live, the organic farmers and all the families who live near that facility. But I do not want you to know that though it may not be easy, you are the last resort for all of us. Only you can deny Dominion's application for the Mariah Center and at the least only you can insist that Dominion and ultimately Enbridge install the independent air quality monitoring system that will provide a public-based record now and will continue to provide public verifiable readings for the safety of our air as long as this project exists. I honestly pray to God that you will do this and that you will take steps to protect us and I thank you for that.
Carolyn.
Patricia. Patricia Alley.
Patricia.
Or Trisha Alley. Good evening. I'm sure you all would rather be somewhere else tonight. I know I would. I would rather be with my girls, seven and nine years old. I am a resident that lives literally, the MEC facility is right behind my house. I hear it, I see it every day. I along with my family have opposed this facility from day one, at least day one when we found out about it, because it was not known and that's very bad. The negative effects of this facility are already being felt in our community. There are so many risks associated with this facility. There's safety, environmental hazards and displacement of our wildlife. Based on the construction progress that this, that has already been made, that the entire project was pushed through so quickly, I'm sure that the permit will be approved no matter what we say, because money talks. The facility could have been built anywhere, anywhere, where there's nobody, no farms, no people, no schools, no anything, but the location was convenient for Dominion and that's all that matters. You can prove me wrong tonight by denying the permit, but big corporations, it's not going to happen. We all know that. Everyone has mentioned Dominion, but let's not forget Enbridge. In 2010, Enbridge was fined $1 million for violating Wisconsin air pollution laws. In 2016, Enbridge had to pay over $160 million for polluting and illegally dumping more than 20,000 barrels of oil in Romeoville, Illinois. Their profit last year, $16 billion. Does anyone think that 1% of their annual profit is going to deter them from committing further crimes in the future? No. I have no doubt that the location for this meeting was chosen because it's too far out of the way for most local residents to show up. I'm going to run and I promise you this, I'm going to run for Senate because it's time for a change and this has to stop for our community, for our families and for the future of our state. It has to stop, but I am going to ask you this one time to please, please deny this permit. Remember, I'm running and I'm going to remember you all.
David Luth-Frank, followed by Eleanor Weston.
Very tired, long day. Grateful to be here with everybody in this space. In some ways, not really grateful, the stuff is just mostly a never-ending nightmare of recurrent problems where we come into these rooms and we have to do this spoken dance with our abusers and that's really tiring and exhausting and some people, you know, have left these resistance movements, many have been killed, many have died. So I think it's really helpful always as I try to maintain a sense of humor with the children that I work with, to come with that humility first, to take a moment and just like take a moment and think about all people that have already lost their lives, to think about the migrants that are drowning in the ocean, to think about those that are lost to communities through the hurricanes that passed through and our island nations, those that are rebuilding everything. Think about the children that we had masked that couldn't go outside for five days when I was in preschool in northern California, to the lives that were burnt to death in fires, to the animals that were burnt to death in the fires, to all those that are being burnt to death in fire right now. So we, all of us in our bodies know these very realistic consequences that are harming everyone and will come to all of us eventually and this never-ending nightmare of fighting fossil fuel companies. So that's where we're at and I think everybody on the board here knows that in some way and is connected to it with children and grandchildren and everybody in this room, regardless of what side of, you know, the authority you may be positioned with. So I feel that and I appreciate our gentleman too recognizing or naming the word "power." I always like to remember the late poet, I'm a little tired and his name's eluding me, if someone can help me recall his name, it's great. He wrote a great piece, DNA Ancestor, but always refers to that, you know, these fossil fuel companies don't have power, the police don't have power, they have authority and they have the authority to keep enacting finance upon our bodies and upon our children. The power that we have always is generated from the earth and the earth loves itself and it loves us and we are here as people that have one opportunity to reflect that love and reflect that true power in protecting our children. The reality is like I, yesterday I spent, I was putting a kid to rest, having them read them a story and then I started crying again because I recognize that their lives have already been pretty much sacrificed at this point based on what they're inherited and that's painful and it's exhausting to keep coming to these places of actually being connected to the harm and feeling it in my body and for the people here that know that in their bodies too, and then trying to read stories to kids to imagine a future that has already been denied to them. And so it just, it feels absurd and it's like never-ending loop of trauma to come back to another meeting gracefully over here, but it is never in the presence of companies that are enacting that same trauma, enacting that same finance. So we're just like caught in the loop and the story is so boring. So we try to write stories to kids to imagine a future that's not boring and we pray that one of these stories that is of this outcome actually comes true. So we pray that the stories that you read to your children and your grandchildren have outcomes that have these beautiful imaginative possibilities that we all hope for, you know, the ones that make us cry because they're so beautiful and they could be so possible if we stopped permitting the harm from happening. So that's what we have to do. We teach kids boundaries to protect their bodies, but when they're adults aren't able to uphold those boundaries, they get violated and to everyone that's been impacted by personal harm and direct violence, it's exhausting to try to heal from that. And so we're collectively trying to do it and we can, we really appreciate y'all in the corner right now to at least stop this one inaction of harm upon the earth and upon the people, the communities that are directly in the line of error right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Eleanor Weston.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Weston. I am a health sciences librarian living nearby Durham, North Carolina. I'm here to ask to deny the air quality permit for the Mariah Energy Center. As a member of the local community, I am very concerned about the impact of this facility on local air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and by the lack of safety measures included in the plan. As I'm sure you know, Dominion Energy has refused to include common sense safety features in this plant, including leak detection and repair systems or double wall tanks. They have also declined to create a risk management plan for this facility. Their argument for why they do not need a risk management plan is because the regulation of the Department of Transportation would supersede the need for this plan because it is not a stationary source. I don't think this argument makes sense for our community. The emissions that will happen will happen here and will affect the local residents. I also don't think it is acceptable or responsible to put an air quality hazard like this in our community without a plan for what happens if there is an accident or additional emissions. Moreover, Dominion Energy has a history of leaks and air pollution from their facilities. A Dominion facility in Chesterfield, Virginia emitted over 180,000 pounds of pollution above their permitted leaks, as reported by the EPA's toxic release inventory. As the agency in charge of making sure North Carolina residents can safely breathe the air, it is your job to treat Dominion Energy's plans with skepticism, check their work and to deny permits to projects that threaten our air quality. To elaborate on the hazards of this plant, if this plant or any of the transportation of its inputs or products were to leak, they would leak methane gas, formaldehyde, acrylene and other volatile organic compounds. Methane is highly flammable, it is suffocating in large amounts and can cause explosions. The other pollutants I named, many are carcinogens and can cause asthma. With their own estimates of, their hazardous air pollutants for this plant would be at 77% of North Carolina's acceptable ambient levels, but amounts are likely higher because their estimates did not include secondary formations of these pollutants. So I do hope you will examine those numbers and require the inclusion of secondary formation in the acceptable levels and if that exceeds acceptable levels, to deny the permit because that is an unacceptable hazard to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weston. And our final speaker tonight, Tim Martin.
So my name is Tim Martin. I'm from Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm an architect, but lately I've been a climate activist. We had some tree protection issues in Raleigh. It turns out developers can do whatever they want, same story, but with trees. And once I found out that the tree film series that I put together was actually a climate emergency series, I started to ask, why is climate in such dire situation when we're not being told this in the mainstream media? Well, it turns out that we haven't had this much carbon dioxide in the atmosphere in 33 million years, at a time when the, you know, the fifth mass extinction was 65 million years ago. Earth conditions zoomed up in temperature and carbon dioxide for 20 million years and has only started coming down around that time when Antarctica and the southern tip of Africa unhooked and the ocean circulation's really started going and that's the primary driver of the climate air conditioning system of the earth. It's the hot waters from the equator are mixing with the polar water temperatures in the northern south pole. And would you believe, because of fresh water melting at the poles, it's short-circuiting the ocean circulation and we are on track for the ocean currents that regulate all of our climate. That could shut down in the next decade or two and when that ocean circulation stops, it flips the switch on humanity's ability to grow food in the southern hemisphere, in the equilateral hemispheres. So I guess I'm just here to support the community. Obviously it's a bad idea, but our economic system is, it never accounted for social and ecological negatives, so here we are. But I'm just trying to, I can't emphasize enough, we are out of time when it comes to carbon dioxide in the atmosphere and that's just one greenhouse gas. If you add methane and nitrous oxide, it puts the carbon dioxide equivalent almost double where we were pre-industrial before we started burning fossil fuels. So what the fuck? We have broken Earth climate boundary and it's only one of nine planetary boundaries. Has anybody heard of the planetary boundaries? It's a Netflix film, you can watch it in about an hour. It explains all the nine boundaries. We've broken six of them. Climate is just one.
Mr. Martin.
Oh, sorry, I thought I was out of time. We've broken six of the nine planetary boundaries. I would highly, highly recommend if you have Netflix, to just watch Breaking Boundaries: The Science of Our Planet. That's what got me started and I started following the climate scientists. They're not telling us this news because it's the economy. They can't afford to slow down business as usual, but when the Amazon trucks stop coming in my children's lifetime and when the food can't show up on the shelf, look around. These are the people you're going to have to work with to figure out how to go local. These are the people you're going to have to work with to figure out how to go local. And I'm just saying, this is our future for the next decade or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We have thirty speakers tonight, and that is all the names that we have for today tonight. If you did not speak and wish to provide comment for the Mariah Energy Center, remember there are other locations by comment. Comment period closes tomorrow, on the 2nd, 2024, 5:00 PM. You may call 919-707-8726 and leave a voicemail with your person's last name from your representative and comments related to the Mariah Energy Center. You can provide written comments to the email, DAQ@publiccomment@deq.nc.gov with Mariah Energy, 23A and 77. You can use Facebook mail and submit written comments to the address listed in the public notice. All comments must be postmarked by Friday, August 2nd, tomorrow, 2024, or you can submit comments to the box up front. Based on the information received tonight during the public hearing and comments received throughout the comment period, I will make a recommendation to the Director of the Division of Air Quality for its consideration in making a final decision on the permit for Mariah Energy Center. And with that, I thank you all for being here, thank you for your attendance and patience, and with that, the public area is adjourned.
Could I be, could I be so rude as to ask that we acknowledge those who have carried this initiative? I don't know what's going on after this meeting, but I think this is a wonderful opportunity to give standing applause for those who are carrying this initiative. Thank you very much. Thank you.